All rise, we have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Khan?
Here.
Trustee Minks?
Here.
Trustee Sheba?
Here.
Trustee Phil?
Here.
Trustee Travis?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
All present, your honor. Thank you. Can I get an approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of July 8th, 2025?
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 8th, 2025.
Second.
A motion made by trustee Minks, seconded by trustee Khan. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Special reports, we have none. Public hearings, there are none. No plan commission reports. Residents comments on agenda items only, and I believe that is Mariano Arena.
Right up there, sir.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a neighbor who, his son has a e-bike, and he has up and down the street, up and down the sidewalk. He brings his buddy over who has an electric scooter, and the two of them go up and down. When he's on the bike, he is shorter than the back rear view of my window. When I back up, he shows up on the camera. So I'm very concerned about this item, and I'd like to see what we should do about it.
All right, stay tuned, it's on tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, President's report. I do want to talk about our Dumpster Street Corridor Plan, because we want to hear from you and get your feedback and ideas regarding the future of Dumpster Street. Residents can provide their feedback on what they would like to see along Dumpster by visiting plandumpster.org or attending our next community session during our National Night Out on August 5th. And to that end, please join our police department next month on August 5th from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the American Legion Civic Center as we hold our annual National Night Out event. This free and family-friendly event helps to highlight our fantastic police department and builds the bonds between our residents and the Morton Grove Police Department. It's so much fun, I hope everybody comes out. Metro parking, we're still in the construction process, and there will be a change in the configuration of the construction site, which will reduce onsite parking. The village is emphasizing accessible parking and keeping the drop-off location, but starting August 1st, commuters will be able to use the parking lot just north and west of the train station at 8550 Lehigh. We are prioritizing residents' access to the lot, so residents who are interested in receiving a parking permit will be able to purchase the permits this week, and for non-residents, you can purchase next week. The price is $150 for access to the lot from August 1st through the end of October. Sales are available from 8:30 to 5:00 at Village Hall in the Finance Department. That is all for my report. Clerk's report?
I just had a quick thank you to the police department. They had brought popsicles to all the kids at Oriole Pool today, including my granddaughter, and everybody was so excited, so I wanted to thank you.
All right, thank you. Staff report?
Yes, your honor, if I may, I have a few items for presentation tonight. So the first would be Resolution 2523, which is ordinance amending Title V, Chapter IV, Section 10 of the municipal code regarding prohibited actions, and then creating Title V, Chapter IV, Section 14 entitled Motor Driven Scooters and Electric Bicycles. So I have a presentation tonight that I'd be going through for the board. Just a little background, and the resident who spoke earlier was touching on this and that. In the Chicagoland region, there's been a lot more use of e-bikes, and as our staff has been looking at it, and I want to compliment both our chief and deputy chief Johnson, who put this presentation together and did a ton of work looking at what the state law is and what other municipalities are doing to craft sensible guidelines, but also, just as importantly, create something that keeps people safe and tries to address the prevalence we now have with e-bikes. And so with that, I'm going to go through kind of what our regulations are, and we have some adjustments we'll be talking about tonight, but also, this is going to be the first read, and obviously, the intent would be getting any feedback from the board, the community, and present this for a second reading at our first meeting in August. So with that, and the focus of this presentation will be on 514-1. It's going to be addressing the creation of a new section of our code. Currently, if you were to look at our code, the use of e-bikes and motorbikes in general is actually prohibited, and it's been prohibited since the mid-aughts, but we want to reflect kind of modern times with how these are utilized. So our police department did a very deliberate review of it as they kind of looked at what is done in different communities, what state law is, and tried to reflect the current environment. So the first part that I'll just go through briefly are the definitions. So we've added Class 1, 2, and 3 of e-bikes into the municipal code. This just reflects what state law has for it. So I'll just briefly read them. Class 1 are bicycles that have assistance via pedaling, so they do stop assistance at 20 miles per hour. Class 2 has a similar limit of 20 miles per hour, but there is motor assistance without pedaling, so basically, it will go up to 20 miles per hour whether or not the person pedals. And then Class 3 is motor assistance via pedaling, so similar to Class 1, except for it has a higher speed of 20 miles per hour. Additional definitions, and this is kind of duplicating what state law is, but also to kind of clean up our code. So electric scooters, this is devices that are two or three wheels with handlebars, floorboard, and it can be stood while riding, and it's solely powered by electric motor and human power, and the maximum speed with or without human propulsion is in excess of 10 miles per hour. Staying with definitions, the low-speed electric scooter may be defined in line with state law, 625 ILS 51-14011, regarding a vehicle that weighs less than 100 pounds with two to three wheels, handlebars, floorboard, and it can be stood up while riding, that is solely powered by electric motor and human power, and his maximum speed with or without human propulsion is no more than 10 miles per hour. So the next couple of sections just go over the different types of operations. So electric bicycle operation, trying to tie this to what you're used to of a bicycle, so same equipment that you would require for a bicycle. Class 2 and 3 would be prohibited on sidewalks, and so Class 2, as you may recall, are bikes that are propelled at 20 miles per hour with or without human intervention, and Class 3 is bicycles that have up to 20 miles per hour with human-powered assist. So there has to be someone that is cycling while going through it. And then Class 1, which is the lowest-powered bicycles, would be allowed on sidewalk or street, and those are very similar to normal bicycles, just with powered assist, up to 20 miles per hour. One aspect of this, and we are going to be revising it, and it'll be reflected in a future ordinance, is the current draft says 18 years or older with driver's license. What we're going to be modifying that to with the board's concurrence is 16 or older, and that's in line with state guidelines. So if you are old enough and have the ability to get a driver's license to drive a vehicle, you would also be able to use these e-bikes. So with the standard being that someone who is using these vehicles, especially because they can go a lot faster than a traditional bike easier, you are then familiar with the rules of the road and understand your responsibility on the roads by having that driver's license. So the intent would be to make the user safer and have anyone who is also on that roadway, other pedestrians, other bicyclists, be safe as well, because anyone using it would be at that level of having a driver's license and the knowledge of what they should be doing on the road. It would also require helmets for users, a label, this is something that's actually required by state law as well, but it is something that all these bikes are supposed to have a label on them to understand what device they are, and then obviously, required to have the capability to be operated by wheels, so they can function as a bike in lieu of the electric engine working. Electric scooter and low-speed electric scooter, we have an example here that the police department put together, but these are what you've seen of those devices that, two wheels or three wheels, that don't necessarily have pedals, but they would be prohibited on sidewalk unless they are the low-speed electric scooters. My apologies. And then the low-speed are allowed on sidewalks only. Similar to our last slide for definitions, we will be revising our ordinance by the next meeting to have it be someone who is 16 years or older with a driver's license with that same intent, that if you are using these vehicles, you're aware of the rules of the road and your expectations, and the expectations of other users of the roadway, and then having a helmet required, and also a requirement that it has the capability to be operated via human propulsion. So using this device as an example that someone could, if it is not powered, be able to push forward on it with their feet. So this next slide is defining non-highway vehicles, so these are also prohibited just outright, and these are in line with some other vehicles that have been prohibited for a long time in the village. But what this is defined as is anything that's battery-powered or could have electric gas that's driven all-terrain vehicles, such as a golf cart, off-highway motorcycle, recreational off-highway vehicle, a go-kart, a minibike, motorized skateboard, or any other motor-driven vehicle for which the state of Illinois does not issue a title document, does not issue license plates or registration documents. And then in the last section of defined vehicles, these are toy vehicles. You see some of these around town, but it's basically a battery-powered ride-on toy that does not exceed 10 miles per hour, and it's designed for children under the age of eight. And so the provisions of the code don't apply to children vehicles. This is actually something we've had in our code, I think, since the mid-aughts, but this is something that would also be defined and covered in our code in terms of the operation and what the limits are of these types of vehicles. Some parental responsibilities and guidelines. If someone were to use these vehicles in contrast with our code or conflict with our code in regards to the safety of other people, they can be cited and also have the vehicle impounded and be subject to a fee of $50 assessed to the owner and operator of the device. That's similar to other empowerment charges that we have. And then the other component of this is just that a lot of the users of these vehicles are under the age of 18, and so we do put in language into the code that it would be unlawful for parents to permit someone to violate the law. So basically, it does put an onus on parents to monitor, make sure that their kids, if they're using these devices, use them safely and in line with our code and state laws. The last section that we would add to the code would be re-titling exemption, but it basically just says what vehicles would be exempted from the provisions of this code, and they boil down to authorized vehicles from police, fire, or other unit of government, any motor vehicle that's driven with someone who needs it for disabilities or in line with a motorized wheelchair, and then if something is motor-driven as part of a village sanctioned parade. So something that the police department did, that I, kind of a clean document that helps guide people, is, you know, what can I use and where? And so on this chart, and something that I would anticipate that as this gets approved, what we'll be doing is putting on our website and having information out there so the public, not only does the police department have guidelines for enforcing these going forward, but just as important, we are able to communicate to the public, what are the expectations? Would be a chart like this that has where bicycles can be used, which would be on the street and sidewalks, and then what certain types of e-bikes can be used in different venues. So Class 1 can be on sidewalks, and Class 2 and 3 cannot be on sidewalks, but all of those devices can be on streets, and then low-powered scooters, something that goes less than 10 miles per hour is not allowed on the street, but is allowed on sidewalks, and electric scooter that goes over 10 miles per hour is allowed on streets, but is limited to 35 miles per hour below. And with that, that concludes our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or anything that the board may have in regards to this.
I have a question. So what I'm discerning from this is that kids that are 10 years old cannot be riding those bicycles in the street.
That is correct. They would not be allowed to use them, not only in the street, but also on sidewalks if they're under 16.
Okay, because that's what we see a lot of, and what are the recourses from the people, residents and/or neighbors that see the kids doing that? And you kind of, as you know, the gentleman said, you fear for their safety if you're going to run them over, you know, backing up, because they just jump out of nowhere sometimes.
Yeah, so I think that the part that it starts with, and I know our chief has already looked at this with our deputy chief, is that prevention is going to be the most important part of this. So our police department, I think, is already gearing up for speaking to schools and making educational materials, just because our police can show up and, you know, maybe educate a couple of people and their parents, but it really will be helpful as we put stuff on the website, actually have the information out there in the newsletter, so that way we get to people before they're out in the street, just because by that point, a kid might be already in a spot where they're going to get hurt. So anything we can do to try to educate them before, especially, and I know as this was raised, the desire was to have this brought up as soon as possible, just because it is the summertime and we want to make sure we help people. And so making sure that we're in a position to craft, you know, consistent and logical guidelines, but also that we have the ability to educate people on what those are.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Chuck, I do have a question. There are other things such as hoverboards, which are based, you know, work on Electric City 2, and a lot of kids, they enjoy riding hoverboards on the sidewalks and the road. Would this ordinance include something like that as well, or?
So I'm going to ask the chief if he can come down if he knows the answer, but I believe it would fall into the non-highway vehicles, just because... So it would...
Okay, okay.
But that was my interpretation, was that anything like that is a non-highway vehicle that would be prohibited.
Is a what?
A non-highway vehicle, and it'd be prohibited. So, but we can confirm that and make sure we address that.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
John?
Chuck, you had said if you confiscate a bike for doing something wrong, and it's a $500 fee. Now, is that a fine or is that a fee?
It is a fee.
I don't understand the difference.
So a fee, and the corporation counsel will correct me when I'm misvying here, but a fine is an assessed penalty, a fee is for our costs, and so there are costs associated with us taking and pounding that bike and maintaining it. So it'd be a fee assessed on the...
Well, to follow up on that, and I have it in my questions I gave you, is if I get caught running a red light or stoplight, I get a ticket. It's nowhere near $500. So I don't understand a $500 for a bike.
So it's a little different situation. For the $500 fee, or for the apples-to-apples, it would be if someone's car gets impounded, which is the $500 fee. So if there was someone's car being impounded, which the chief will tell me if I'm wrong in this, but for running a red light usually would not lead to that, it'd be a different situation. But our intention is not to impound these devices, it's to educate people, and I would view that as a last resort if we had to impound it.
And then once we pass this, we will probably maybe have a month where they'll be stopped and talked to, but they won't be ticketed for...
We've not gotten to the stage of that. My intention with this is that we will educate people to such a degree and understanding that enforcement will be needed in certain cases, but our intention is to try to get as much cooperative enforcement as possible.
Or we give them a slide on the first one and a ticket on the second one, something like that.
Okay. But I do want to add, just so that it's clear, is right now, none of these are allowed at all, anywhere, on sidewalks, on streets, at all. And you don't see the police department going up and arresting children and rustling. So what we're trying to do is impose some reasonable regulations. However, I want to be real careful about saying, well, for the first month, we're not going to issue any citations, because the chief could probably expound on this better than me, but right now, there are adults that are misusing these vehicles and truly creating dangerous situations. And I wouldn't want to have some blanket policy saying everybody gets a pass for a month, because at least from adjudication court, we have had people in there that just don't seem to care that they're prohibited, period, much less regulated. So everything in reason.
And I have one last question, if I may, Ms. Mayor. If they do get a fee or a fine, if you're calling it a fee, does that go on their record for these individuals, or?
No, no, we're not.
So it's not like a ticket that they are getting, it's just...
It's local adjudication.
Yeah.
Okay.
Elaine?
I just had a clarifying question. So anyone who's under 16 can ride a low-speed scooter on the sidewalk? Or if they're under eight, they can be in one of those toy cars? Is that correct, or you might not read that right?
You're right.
Yeah, no, that is correct. Yeah.
But everything else, you have to be 16?
Yeah.
Licensed.
Licensed.
The low-speed ones are essentially treated as bicycles, so.
But they can't be on the street, they have to be on the sidewalk? Thank you.
Would you like to speak? Could you go to the microphone, please?
Your honor, thank you. I'm a regular biker, not electric one. And what I see lately, like what Terry said, adults are also riding electric bikes, and I see them everywhere, such as Forest Preserve Park, and then whenever there is a curve, they are like, they are zooming. And my question to the chief is, how do you detect the speed? Because I'm not sure whether they are below 10. I don't even think they are 15, they are like 20, 25, or something like that. They are very fast, and it scares me, to be honest with you. Thank you so much for...
To answer your question, maybe I'm wrong. If they don't have to detect the speed, it's just the type of bike that's prohibited, so they don't have to tell what speed they're going.
Right, but it is a scary situation, I agree, yeah. So I'm kind of worried about my safety when they are coming very fast and passing by, or they are coming towards me at the turn, and in Forest Preserve, sometime you don't see who is coming up front from you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. John?
My comment, my comment on the forest preserves. Electric bikes are illegal in the forest preserves.
Really?
Yes.
So what can I do about it? Can I tell them something, or I can create a fight?
You could just tell them I've already called the police, and leave it at that.
And just for clarification, that is the jurisdiction of the Forest Reserve Police, so it would not be the Morton Grove Police Department?
This isn't really supposed to turn into a question and answer. Do you have a quick comment, though?
It's just a quick comment. The way I found out about this was at the end of the school year at Parkview, the principal sent home a "Have a Good Summer" letter, and it was in there. It was listed that it's prohibited and that this law is going on, so.
We just need neighbors to get out, we need neighbors to get out and tell people, however we can spread the word, because people need to understand. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, so...
Yeah, so first reading, and we'll be presenting for a second reading at our next meeting in August. With that, I will go on to the next item on the administrator's report, which is the presentation of Resolution 2554, which is a resolution providing an inducement to the village of Morton Grove and prospective developers for redevelopment projects in the village of Morton Grove in Cook County, Illinois. And so I will read directly from my legislative summary on this, but this is to authorize future reimbursements of expenses incurred by the village and potential developers to improve and redevelop the Dempster Street redevelopment project area. Dempster Street from Central Avenue to the forest preserve suffers from blighting factors, including obsolescence, deterioration, structures below minimum code standards, inadequate utilities, lack of community planning, and stagnating or declining property values, and the economic and physical development of the village may be harmed if blighted areas continue in this area. And as such, the village is proposing this resolution that's intended to induce and support the village's and developers' efforts to evaluate and negotiate potential redevelopment projects and to affirm that the village will take appropriate action as allowed by the law, including the TIF law, and bargain good faith to negotiate appropriate redevelopment agreements. And if the village determines that a desired project is appropriate for economic incentive programs and such costs are qualified under the TIF Act, that the village may authorize the reimbursement of eligible expenditures to the village and developers incurred after the date of this resolution. And with that, I would ask if you have any questions.
I didn't understand what you read. Is this requiring about TIF?
Yes, sir.
So are we trying to set up for TIF district now, tonight?
This is the first step of what would be a TIF district. This is the inducement resolution, so this authorizes the village to expend funds in an effort to create a TIF. So there's many steps that would happen, both public steps that would then create a process in which we'd involve the partner governments and notify the impacted area, but this is rather just starting that process to authorize us to expend resources related to the possible development of a TIF.
And that'll come out of the general fund?
It will come out of the TIF fund, will be the source of funds.
So we have to establish the TIF first?
The eventual cost could be, they would be assessed back on the...
Oh, so we're going to spend money, and once we set up the TIF, then the TIF will pay us back for what we invested?
That would be the intent.
Okay, thank you. That's all my comments.
Can I get a motion?
Approve.
No motion. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 25-54. Second?
A motion made by trustee Minks, seconded by trustee Travis. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, please take the vote. Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Resolution 25-54 passes six to zero, your honor.
And I have one more item, your honor. So this is for the benefit of the public who are in the audience and also those who might be watching at home. Over the last week, the village has hosted FGMA, which is the village's architect, to meet with staff regarding the initial design for our future Village Hall Police Department, which is going to be located at 6201 Dempster Street. And as some of you may know, the village has been working on this process since 2022, with formal approval of contracts to facilitate the purchase of the building in April of 2023, followed by the closing of the property in December of 2024. So as the design phase continues, the village will be applying for a special use application to be reviewed and considered by the Appearance Commission, Traffic Safety Commission, Plan Commission, and Board of Trustees at the regularly scheduled meetings. I should add, we are early in the design phase, so that's not something that's going to be happening next week. It's something probably hopefully later this fall or in the next several months. But these meetings, once they do occur, will be open to the public, and we would invite public comment for consideration, and we will be providing formal notification to neighbors that are within 250 feet of the property by mail, installing signs on the property, and publishing a notice in the local newspaper to provide notification for public hearing. But any residents who are outside of that 250 feet, or anyone who is interested, can learn more as we will be putting information on our website in the near future that provides updates, notices, and other information. And so with that, I also kind of wanted to just discuss what is going on and what we've heard questions on, and just address some of the questions we've heard from the community so far. And so to answer that directly, I just want to clarify that the village, as we look at our plans, we have no plans to close Georgiana Avenue. The village has no plans to restrict parking during snow events on Fernald Avenue or Georgiana Avenue, and the current plan for the site design is to have the primary vehicular access points along Fernald Avenue, so traffic is routed to Dempster Street where there's a signalized intersection. And so all plans can change, as I said, this is still early in the process. We wanted to share that information just because we've gotten those questions, and so we wanted to clarify. And then for the benefit of anyone who might be listening at home, if you ever have any questions about this process, you can always reach out to me directly at cmeyer@mortongroveil.org or on my direct line, which is 847-663-3001. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chuck. Corporation counsel?
No report.
Okay, reports by trustees. Trustee Khan?
No report, Jana.
Trustee Minks? Trustee Minks?
No report, Your Honor.
Trustee Sheba?
Yes, Your Honor. Sorry. I have Resolution 2555 authorizing an agreement with Ring Central for telecommunication licenses, equipment, hardware, and implementation, and annual maintenance for all village departments. This agreement, this resolution is to authorize an agreement with Ring Central. The Village of Morton Grove utilizes telephones for internal communications between staff and external communications with constituents. The current phone system has limited support and lacks features of modern technology, telecommunications systems. In February of 2025, the Information Technology Division initiated a public request for proposal, process to upgrade or replace the existing phone system. The proposal was received and evaluated on a variety of factors, including cost, applicability, functionality, market presence, vendor presentation, references, and staff feedback. It was found that Ring Central of Belmont, California, provided a suitable cost-effective solution to support the telephone communication needs of the village departments. Pending the finalization of the agreement, the cost of licenses, equipment, hardware, implementation, and annual maintenance is set to not exceed $128,082. I move that we pass Resolution 2555.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Sheba, seconded by Trustee Minks. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote. Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Resolution 25-55 passes six to zero, Your Honor.
I have one more comment. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mike and the Public Works team for that wonderful job you guys did a few days ago during that micro, what is it? Microburst? What was that?
I think it was a microburst.
Yeah, like a tornado of some sort. And, you know, my neighborhood got hit really hard. Multiple trees were down, branches were down, it was, it was a complete mess. John would have had a heart attack seeing those trees.
Yes, I would have.
So, but within 24 hours, Public Works was cleaning the entire mess up. You guys did a wonderful job, and we thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Trustee Sheba. Trustee Phil?
No report.
Trustee Travis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, I have Resolution 25-56 authorizing a contract with Ultra Strobe Communications Incorporated for the changeover of equipment for police department patrol vehicles. The village maintains a fleet of marked and unmarked vehicles, which are essential for providing responsive and effective public safety services. Vehicles have been in service for extended periods and have accumulated high mileage, often exceed their useful life, impacting reliability and safety. To address this, three newly purchased marked patrol vehicles need to be outfitted with necessary equipment transferred from existing vehicles. In addition, two unmarked vehicles need to receive upgraded lighting packages to enhance safety, and one recently seized vehicle needs to be repurposed for the use as a converted squad car. The police department solicited quotes from multiple vendors specializing in changeovers for police department vehicles to achieve competitive pricing. Of those contacted, only two vendors submitted quotes, while others declined to participate. Ultra Strobe Communications, a private company with over 20 years of experience serving public safety agencies throughout the Chicagoland area, submitted the lowest quote for this work. Their proposal totaling $47,779.50 includes the changeover of three new vehicles and equipment modifications to three existing vehicles. This resolution authorizes the police department to proceed with the vehicle changeover and outfitting process as outlined in Ultra Strobe's proposal. I move that we accept Resolution 25-56 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Travis, seconded by Trustee White. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the vote. Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Resolution 25-56 passes six to zero, Your Honor.
I also wanted to make some mention about the police department's drone program. Earlier this month, our residents were protected by our police department, who utilized the drone program for Morton Grove Days and the Fourth of July Parade. Myself and fellow board members received a demonstration of the capabilities of the drone program during Morton Grove Days by one of the police department drone operators, in which we were able to see in action how the drone was able to monitor situations, provide intel, and respond to emergency calls quickly to provide real-time intelligence to our officers in the field. As we welcomed thousands of residents, or visitors to Morton Grove Days, the drone was able to relay information to officers in the field to help prevent issues from developing into more serious situations. It was amazing to watch the drone and the drone operator officer in action, and to see how these drones are truly effective, proactive safety measures for our police department. So, thank you, Chief Weitzel. Then also, tomorrow, July 23rd, has been designated as Illinois Speed Awareness Day. The Morton Grove Police Department will be participating in a statewide initiative to heavily concentrate on speeding enforcement. Our partners at Cook County Sheriff's Police Department will also be in Morton Grove, starting tonight through tomorrow, to help with enforcement efforts. And then lastly, for the Community Relations Commission, just a reminder that our summer photo contest has started, and photographers are encouraged to take photos of Morton Grove during the summer season to highlight our wonderful community. Participants can submit up to five photos by September 1st, 2025. To do so, please visit the village's website to learn more.
That is the end of my report. Thank you. Thank you for all of that. Trustee White?
No report, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Presentation of warrants, Trustee Khan?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to present a warrant register for July 22nd, 2025, in the amount of $542,199.40, and I hereby make a motion to approve the warrant register as presented tonight.
Motion made by Trustee Khan, seconded by Trustee Phil. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please take the vote. Trustee Phil?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Trustee Khan?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Sheba?
Aye.
The warrant passes presented six to zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Is there any other business?
Mayor, if I may, speak something on behalf of the police department's drone program. I believe recently, we had an incident at the funeral home, and I got a little update from the mayor stating that the police was able to make some progress in that shooting that happened, so wanted to thank the police department on being so active and using the technology to our advantage. And not only that, I believe on July 4th, there were announcements that were made in our newsletters and on our website about the drone usage during that Morton Grove Days. I thought that was really nice. I have a question in regards to that, though. I'm not very familiar with the formal program that we have for the drone. I'm sure there are guidelines that are in place, how do we kind of share the data, and how do we protect the privacy of the people while we are so concerned about the security and the safety? Do we have something like that in place in regards to that?
Yeah, so, the chief, please jump in, but in regards to all of that, and you actually helped me with the answer there, because all that information you saw on our social media was us providing notice, having signs at, at our events saying there is a drone in use, so that covers the notification process for, for the public. I will also say that, for those, I know the board experiences, but for the public's knowledge, all of our drone users have licenses by the FAA, which means they have very specific guidelines as to how they can use their drone, what they can fly over, and I know, we talked a little bit about this, but for our drones specifically, there's times where it will not fly over a crowd, and it will hover over basically unpopulated areas for their own safety. And so, we provide notice to the public so they're aware that drones can be used, so that, that information is out there, but also, we have our staff who are incredibly well-trained to make sure that they are flying in a safe way to keep everyone safe, both in terms of being aware of a drone in use, but also making sure that there isn't an issue with it being flown in the air.
So if I'm understanding correctly, every time there would be a usage of drone for security purposes, the public would be notified ahead of time that there is going to be surveillance through drone?
For a free plan that has that interest.
Okay, and it's not like a 24/7 thing that's happening? Thank you so much for clarifying that, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, residents' comments? We have one. Bill Page?
First, I want to echo the compliments and the confidence we've been hearing tonight in the fine Morton Grove Police Department. So, the question I'm about to ask is meant as a sincere question, not a challenge. News reports around the country keep telling us of masked squads without badges or judicial warrants, accosting and kidnapping people. How are the Morton Grove Police protecting us and preventing this?
Would you like to speak to that, Chief? Sure.
I'd love it.
First, Bill, thanks for the question. I take it in the spirit you intended. We're not as scared of challenges either, so if you ever come with a challenge, we can answer that as well. Firstly, the state of Illinois in 2017 passed what's generally termed the Illinois Trust Act, which prohibits local law enforcement from engaging in immigration activities. Also, as I'm sure everybody in this room is patently aware, in 2017, the Village of Morton Grove passed a welcoming ordinance, which also prohibits local law enforcement from engaging in such activities. All of these prohibitions are rendered into one of our department policies, it's Policy 428. I did write that down as I was thinking about this, this type of issue. And it essentially says that our, no member of our agency shall detain any individual based on a civil violation of federal immigration law, amongst a myriad of other caveats. So, we are not engaged in assisting federal law enforcement in their duties. In response to your question, if anybody has, is approached by anyone masked, not showing identification, and, and this actually happens in other situations not related to potential enforcement activities. If you're approached by a police officer, or someone purporting to be a police officer, whether local or federal, you are certainly free to call 911, and we can help anyone with issues of identifying whether someone is actually, has bona fides as a law enforcement agent, if that makes any sense. Okay? Thanks for the question, Bill.
All right, thank you, Chief. Anything else for tonight? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting ends at 7:42.